No, I don't have a question.
Alright, Vice Chair, I think we're ready.
I will now call the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five birthday events commission meeting order. Will you please stand for the and join me for the flag of allegiance?
Right, begin.
But only if it's to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, with justice for all.
Do we know how to roll call it?
Commissioner Jimenez.
Here.
Commissioner Herrera.
Present.
Commissioner McCollum.
Present.
Vice Chair Bayshu.
Present.
Chair Hyland. But the record showed Chair Hyland is absent. She may be joining us late.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
We have none, Vice Chair.
Will the clerk read the statement of participation, please?
This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the commission may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The chair may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request that or matter be agendas for a future meeting. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. And Vice Chair, we did receive one comment. This comment was received for the record, provided to the commissioners, and made available at the entrance for public inspection. Sunshine Herrera provided comments related to items A and B from the October seventh, two thousand twenty-five Parks and Community Events Commission meeting agenda. And that is all we have.
Approve of the minutes for the October seventh meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll see then.
Do I have a motion? And a second to approve the minutes? Motion to approve.
Second. And Vice Chair, I apologize, I did leave something off the script. We do need to ask for public comments, so I'll just let you know we have no comments on this item. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Herrera and a second by Commissioner McCollum. We'll do a roll call. Commissioner Jimenez.
Aye.
Commissioner Herrera.
Aye.
Commissioner McCollum.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bayshu.
Aye.
And motion carries all ayes.
Agenda item three A, paint and paste community art activity. Can we have an introduction, please?
Uh, this item, Mr. Chair was brought forward by Commissioners Angel Herrera and Ashley McCollum. So, um, not to diminish what they're looking for, or at least wanting to discuss in the staff report, I'll pass it on to them, to you. So Commissioners, it's your choice who must have another example like that?
It was Ashley's idea, so her.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate you taking the lead in that.
Then noting that we have people in the audience out there looking. If you could speak a little louder.
Absolutely, um, so Commissioner Herrera and I are essentially looking at different opportunities to incorporate art events throughout the community. And we've talked about partnering with a few other events that are going on in the city early next year. Uh, and then I have also talked to the library manager about the arts events that they used to have there, but are short on staff now, so they haven't enough to to offer them. Like you'll see there's no arts classes or anything like that on their November calendar. So I started conversations with them just to see what that could look like, and we're just gonna, I think, build from there and and see where there can be a fit for some of these these arts classes that would be focused on incorporating people of all ages. Um, we've talked about potentially partnering senior center, partnering with Rotary, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. So just kind of, we're in the phase of exploring different partnerships right now and looking at what different opportunities are out there. But wanted to bring it up here so we could build on that the next meeting, and I'll let you fill in any gaps that I left.
And so I think another spin that we kind of had on that was, um, you know, Ashley's idea was to kind of bring more art opportunities to the community. Um, and they used to exist before through the library, but currently aren't doing them anymore. Um, so we discussed the opportunity of kind of bringing that back with, uh, you know, small events that we can have there at the library and host. Um, and then possibly potentially grow it into something where maybe we're having a like a spin on like a paint and sip type of event, but it would be paint with parks, and we could have the commission host events at, uh, bigger events that we have, similar to like, uh, the balloon festival every year. Um, doing it along with Halloween events that we have, and then with Snow Fest. So if we had like themed ideas, we could kind of do a painting event at those different events. Um, also brought it up that, uh, you know, we have to talk with Karen from the SCAP gallery, but potentially if she was willing to let us have something on her event, then maybe we could do, um, an Earth Day event and a Butterfly event. And so there we included some artwork kind of ideas, uh, in the back of the packet that we'd be looking at. And so these are kind of more thin towards, uh, children, because we do kind of like children events that happen. And so this is kind of some art ideas that we were looking at, maybe we could do, uh, with kids at those events. And then we'll have to come back once we have, uh, actual dates that we can work with. Uh, but when we come back, we'll be coming back with materials, costs, you know, uh, paintbrushes, paint canvases. Um, some of the materials will, like paintbrushes, uh, will be able to reuse. Paint's typically bought in bulk, so it should last more than one event. Um, but canvases and tablecloths will probably have to be replaced for every event that we do. Plus, if we can't get an instructor from the community to volunteer their time to lead the events, then we'll be looking to hire the instructor.
And I think we were gonna look at an opportunity to partner with the College of the Desert to actually bring in our students there. Um, so we're, we're exploring a lot of different avenues right now, but excited to bring a little bit of color into your package today.
And I think the, the main reason I'm bringing this out now was just so that we can get it in with the commission. Um, and let everybody know what we're working on, and then get additional feedback from the members and see if anybody has any ideas. Uh, because ultimately this is, would be an event that's all of our event, and I'll make sure that things and paintings get heard, and take them into consideration, both what's good.
Any additional or corrections? Or second? Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Jimenez, share any questions?
None.
Um, I wanted to say that the, the, um, spectacular, we needed one component that would keep the people there till three o'clock, because it goes down right at three o'clock. So they brought in pumpkins and they painted the pumpkins. The pumpkins had to dry, so I know about that, that, um, that, um, the, um, the Butterfly Festival, that, that would be a great thing, because they, we did add a thing with the, with their photo, that was something that would keep them, they created a line. So it would be something that would keep people there, because if they were at a ten o'clock and the crawlings for the bikes are at twelve o'clock, they usually don't stay. But I think the thing that we did at this last term was the, uh, photography thing. And then maybe people stay, but this would also put people involved and waiting for the things to dry. Supposed to keep people there at the end till twelve o'clock. Good idea.
Yeah. And I think the next one following that for this will be reaching out to the Arts Commission. Um, you know, because half of this, you know, fallen there around as well with art, so we'll probably reach out to the Art Commission and see if they want to get involved with this stuff. Uh, but, uh, I figure we'll probably bring it up, maybe at their next meeting, we can send it through, see if they have interest in it. I think we're trying to project, yeah.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Vice Chair, we did not receive any public comments on this item.
This item is discussion only, there is no action required. Agenda item lead, discussion of the possibility of hosting a health fair. We can have the intro, can we have the introduction, please?
Yes, Chair, um, this was brought up both individually, and I think they were talking about two different events. Chair Hyland and Commissioner Jimenez, uh, about having the health fairs. Uh, potentially, I always imagine that Commissioner Jimenez is looking to do a health fair at Esperanza Park. Chair Hyland maybe is one of the, I wasn't, we just didn't get the details for a staff report. But I'm married to the discussion, because, um, we just had a health fair here that the ADSQ sponsored, the city, uh, there were like forty, um, tents and vendors there, dealing with health. They had a cooking class, uh, they had other demonstrations. Um, about four to six hundred people were in attendance as far as what I gathered. Um, so it was a big production. So you get into how are you gonna, you know, what do you want that health fair to be? Especially if you have it at local parks, which Esperanza could be is an example of a park. Uh, if you want it here toward that community area, or if you have that panorama, that community area. So it's, in looking at that, um, we set an example of the Fall Loveless Expo at the Senior Center. Obviously, it's geared towards seniors. You can see there's a lot of people you can tap into, to assist in things like that. But it does take quite a bit of coordination, so know what you're biting off. Uh, once again, the commission, when it takes on a project, we're looking for you to do the lion's share of the project, and staff can help you polish up corners and things like that. But know what you're taking on. In addition, you might not want a lot of overlap and saturation of the same thing, because health fairs can be different things. And then we also got the input from Desert Recreation District. So we reached out to Cynthia Marquetza, and she basically said, uh, past events, health screenings are always the big hit. Three eye exam, blood pressure checks, basic wellness assessment, tend to draw most engagement. Having informational booths, the medical providers, health insurance reps, local wellness organizers. Services is helpful. Offering a seminar or mini workshops on topics like nutrition, stress management, aging in place resources, et cetera. And then if you want to bring the younger audience, fitness activities, demos, nutrition, things like that. All our parks have a lot of those elements that can bring in seniors, bring in middle age, bring in young kids, bring in the families, bring everyone. So, uh, once again, without having any specifics, um, basically, this is your introduction on an open discussion on the health fairs. I would ask the commission to engage amongst themselves on what we want to see, where you might think you want a first event to be. Who's gonna take the lead? And know what you're gonna bite off and chew on this thing. Uh, Esperanza Park, I know there's a couple of partners that'd be really willing, because they were helping get in the park. And that's the Desert Health, three partners, Desert Health, Health Characteristics, Melbourne, London University, and El Sol. Could be good partners to get that, because before Esperanza Park happened, that old old Balcolian Middle School, when they were doing the community health assessment, they did put on a health fair at the old Uggel Community School, and it was very successful. Uh, so with that, I'll let, uh, Mario lead the discussion, because Aaron's Cyprus, and he's on your shoulder.
Good. Um, one of the main things that we're gonna do, we're gonna do the same thing like what we did before at our greatest school. Um, Desert Healthcare, they're gonna bring, um, dentists, they're gonna bring a guy doctor, they're gonna bring, um, doctors for women, for mongrels, for basically everything. Uh, all kinds of medical. Uh, the only thing to help her district was wanted to see a uh, our city has kind of tables in shirts for individuals, like doctors, they didn't bring any kind of tables in shirts and that kind of thing. That's the only thing that they were aware.
Do they, do you already have a date, or?
The date, um, is gonna be in February. They have, uh, the person in charge of, um, Desert Healthcare is gonna be here on January next meeting. He's gonna spend exactly what we're, what we're gonna have, the day and everything.
So, once again, if this is gonna be at Esperanza Park, is Pace supporting this or sponsoring?
Pace, uh, just want to support it. The sponsors is gonna be by Desert Healthcare District.
Okay, have they gone through the formal, uh, special events application? So they're gonna, they're gonna do the booking. So just want to make sure, so what Pace's role will be to support something like that? So if that's the case, uh, at the next, um, Pace meeting, uh, there should be enough detail in there to present to the rest of the commission what's gonna happen there, the date and the time. Uh, if the application that has been submitted, we can put that in the packet and get support and consensus for your fellow commissioners to also support the event on there. So just get that consensus going on that. Right, uh, but that's a good thing, and if you could have someone from Desert Healthcare to reach out to me or Ryan if they're gonna do basically a full-on special events. Uh, so you can send it to, uh, normal, what I told all the commissioners, and you're gonna send an email in, you're sending it to myself, Deanna, and Christina, where are your layups? And we'll foster it out or send it out to the applicable people that need to see this. So if you get them in touch with us, or it's actually a direct, they want to see, um, special events permitted, they can go up through Ryan on that. And you can make sure that the city council can approve the use of the park for the third party. And that's the only challenge, because if it's over fifty people, and it's not a Pace event, then we're talking about an outside organization now having that special use. Uh, um, application, should be a challenge. So
is the same application goes applies to, um, like, um, if we're gonna do, if we wanted to do a tournament into this, into our park.
If you're gonna do a tournament with a third party running the event, it's technically kind of their event, but you're supporting it, yes, it'll need a special, uh, use term in the park. And those get approved by the city council. And remember, a special use permit is really only needed when you get over fifty. If it's a gathering of people and you're under, I'll say under fifty, and you can do it organically, you don't need a special use term. So if you get five groups of people saying we want to play softball, or the partners, you can just get there early and start playing ball all day unless it's may start for some. But you can do that. But if you want to make sure that you might have a bigger crowd, and you want to make sure the city knows that you're there, make sure the police department, fire department know you're there, not necessarily have active support, but know you're there. If the city's approved you using that park, then it can be reserved for that. Then you can do that. And once again, since it's at a park, I don't know how that's gonna work, you know, the special use probably gets approved, but we gotta work with PRD, because they're the ones that'll actually be the ones, you know, doing the part being that's at the same time you've got. So, little growing curve on that, because we haven't actually
But DRB's
done it up.
Who's hosting the event, the health fair?
Desert, Desert Healthcare.
Desert Healthcare.
I get, there's way too many deserts in the deserts. And way too many.
Yeah, Desert Healthcare District.
Desert, okay.
You know what, and this will be a good testing round, because
Yes.
we haven't done one at the park. DRB runs the parks technically now, operationally. So have, uh, Desert Healthcare send that? Special use permit in ASAP, because now this is gonna be the first, test the waters, it goes into Ryan, and he's gonna say, well, Desert Healthcare needs a box that they check off on, and say, yeah, it's okay. Because they may be running an event at that time, too. So let's get it as soon as possible, or at least tell us when you think it's gonna happen.
Who's your contact at Desert?
That's, um, either Event, Federal Health, or
Okay, all right. I'll be eating, I'll be, she has a pee. All right, all right, and then I just have something to add.
No, it's your discussion time, so
Are there any additions from the commission?
freely.
Um, this would be in relation to, uh, any Chair Hyland's opportunity that she was working on. So I think that's planned to be more of a family festival, family fitness festival versus like a health fair. Um, so just to like create that distinction, because I think they were two separate events, and I just spent
I thought so too, but she wasn't here and didn't give us a lot of descriptions, so I'm glad you're so, Phyllis said, yes.
So I just spent, I mean, having some of these conversations with her, too, and just kind of looking at some of the different partners that we could partner with for a family fitness festival, um, in late winter, early spring next year. So I think we've got some time to kind of establish some of those partnerships and stuff. But that's what she was thinking, I think largely to involve more families and have something that could be on the weekend that kind of would work for, for different major groups, too, in tandem with the, the yoga events.
Didn't she have any parking lines specifically on various?
I think she was thinking about the amphitheater as like a testing ground for it, and then replicate it in other parks. Uh, because we already have the infrastructure there for like speakers, for different like dance classes and stuff like that. Uh, and so we wanted to kind of do it there as a pilot, and then ideally replicate it in other parks once we figure out like, you know, what works well and what people enjoyed about the family fitness festivals. And we're looking at just partnering with different businesses in Cathedral City to bring in like different yoga instructors, dance instructors. Uh, I think people that could be like hit trainings, and we're also looking at doing some of that programming, um, in both Spanish and English, too. So trying to make it more accessible as well.
No, and that's a good point, because, um, Commissioner Jimenez, you were planning on having a lot of English and Spanish, uh, in there in this event, too. And, um, so that's always a good, uh, you know, integration.
Yeah.
To cause segregation in the community and all that, so that's good.
This is really, I think, her brainchild initially, and I've just been kind of helping with a few logistic things. Uh, so I'll let her speak to it, I think, for the next meeting. Uh, once you have a few more things kind of lined up, too.
Okay, so here's what I'd like for the next meeting, if possible, and it's Mario. Since you are focused in on this event, you need to give us all your bullet points of what you know, what you want, what you think you're gonna look for support. But giving us information, support of the commission to support the event and participate, um, to be able to establish what for the next meeting. And if you can work with Aaron or talk to Aaron about giving us some more of those details, even if it's a discussion, but just give us more details that we can segregate these as two separate things. So it's up to the commissioners to give a, put in, is getting input out. Deanna actually is the first one to get the staff report, so she does a great job of combining what you have. Don't throw a lot, don't throw junk in for the win. Nice bullet points of what you think, time, date, what the event's about, who's the audience you want to cater to, any sort of things you want to scrap gallery level, things like that. Put them all down there. And if you want to formulate the sentences thrown in chat GPT and, and organize. Deanna gets that, she does a great job of putting the staff report together, and then I review it, and that's how it gets to you, so. Um, give us that help. It's up to you to do the whole initial work, and we'll help polish it up.
And then we'll do that for paint and paste as well, for that we
Yes, and if you have some dates for your first events, because the one thing that yours is gonna take time on, then potentially the other two is if you're gonna want money from Pace, like I said, we gotta go to city council and get a request for that funding, you know, this two, three, and four hundred dollars. And you've made a good point. If you're gonna buy paintbrushes, and you know you're gonna do this for a couple of events, you can do that. You know, all at one time, combining all, you can do a lot of savings on paintbrushes, on the little canvases. I imagine you're looking at all the canvases, paint, and all that stuff.
Okay, I have a staff question. Um, historically, we have been dark in January, is that part, and is there also?
That's up to if you have, um, a Gemini items or not.
We don't have, definitely.
Well, this, this has to do with, uh,
Yeah, this business on Commissioner Gomis.
Oh, no, no, he's right.
This has to do with the agenda. Commissioner, uh, Jimenez said he wanted to be starting in January, so I just wanted to make sure that we're here.
We had one last year.
Hold on, let's look at the, it sounds, let's look at the dates. Yeah.
Which is good.
It's good, isn't it?
Yeah. We did have one last year, the year before we didn't, we didn't have an agenda item. So it's all about if you have a Gemini. If we have this, this, all right.
Holiday.
And just, just a note, yes.
Right, the way the holidays happened last year.
We would leave the agenda out early the week before, because we'll be closed for the, the New Year, so that's all I would request is that we get those in earlier for the January meeting.
So we have a, so it's December ninth.
December second.
December's back, so I'm gonna leave it.
And January sixth. So you got December second and January sixth.
And then just because I'm new and to understand kind of what that timeline looks like in as far as getting stuff to city council, what's the turnaround time on that? Like, so if we give you everything you need
So have you sent her a calendar?
Yes, but that, that only has our calendar of when we're, I think, are you saying for once we approve something and then
Yeah, like what, like, is that like a two month process to then sending approved?
No, city council typically is right after you approve it, we'll get it to the first available city council that we can be signing. Uh, I err this month, because you guys approved the yoga and the park last. Meaning, I should have got it on the city council agenda, so we're gonna have it the first week, September. But the event will start on January.
But technically, it's that same month that I
It's pretty
following army that met in Seminitha, and then that will get approved, and then we would know at the next meeting.
Right.
Theoretically, yeah, all right, thank you.
Are we good here? Okay, are there any public comments on the side of?
We have none.
This was for discussion only, there's no action required. Do we have any staff comments? No, I'm asking you.
Um, I've just had one question on, um, The bikes for the, what is the target age group, do we think, and it's a first time event?
Well. It is a first time event. The, the regular sized bikes seem to work really well.
The twenty four?
Sorry.
Okay.
The, well, you had a large bike at the spectacular, you had the larger bike and the smaller bike.
Yeah.
Just, just the larger bikes. And we're gonna have people who have a raffle, if they just put their raffle ticket in the one that they want. And the color they want, there's no, I got this bike, I got that bike.
They'll all be the, that four will be the same color.
The same color, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I, that's all I need now.
And as far as the banner goes, I will find source for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Christina, any comments?
I haven't. Thank you.
I have none either. So now we're on to the next item.
Do you have any future agenda items to discuss? No, you have commissioners. Okay, I call on these commissioners to give their reports.
We did want us to pass when Chair Hyland got through.
I didn't, she did arrive, I announced her, I will have her in the minutes, thank you.
I did attend a K with Halloween movies at the amphitheater, and I did see DRB tabling there, which is awesome. I really appreciate that they're kind of highlighting the different programming that they have in a lot of different spaces. I did want to just make a request that they put those scholarship forms out when they are tabling, so people know that that is a resource. Because I kind of went through their website to try and figure out where those forms were to. You know, see how difficult it was or how easy it was to kind of apply for one of those scholarships first through their classes if you meet the requirements. And it is kind of varies in there, so I think just people knowing that that's an option that they have available to them. When they're already out there tabling would be great. And that way people could, you know, take that home and, you know, have the resources they need to be able to think more easily access that broken thing in those resources. Thank you. And then as we mentioned earlier, Commissioner Herrera and I are working on a series called Paint But Pace. We're still workshopping the name and, you know, figuring out exactly what that's gonna look like, but excited to report more. I think at the next meeting, once we kind of establish a few more partnerships and have more conversations, I think. With the library and around the Butterfly Festival and just a few more things. And then I am partnering with Chair Hyland as well on the Family Fitness Festival, but I'll let her share more about that. And then just planning to attend, I think Taste and Sounds this month, the Quarterly Arts Exhibit at the library. I really enjoyed that last time around. The Hot Air Bloom Festival, need to go get the tickets, uh, battalion day. And I think just looking forward to kind of taking that steps around some of these projects, so that's my primary report off. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hyland?
Yes, hello everybody, apologies, government shutdown, we work extra fun. Apologies for my readiness, I'm from Riverside. Super excited to look into doing our own sort of wellness fair and family expo. After attending KESQ's this past weekend, it was absolutely packed, like brim to brim, the entire amphitheater was full. All sorts of resources and goodies. And also saying that like nine to two is way too long, that you don't need a five hour window for anybody. It all, you know, seems to dip towards the end, so like a two to three hour window max. I like seeing how they set up, I like seeing how they utilize stage bathrooms and having an emcee on stage while doing expo. So got lots of creativity as about coming to her art upcoming events. And we're happy to report that our amphitheater is so busy, it's really hard for me to plan something there, so that's a good calling up. Encouraging everybody to continue to support our arts in our city, the Fourth Fridays, the pre-Fourth Fridays. We got a story on KESQ about that, it's awesome. We have over fifty artists in Cathedral City, so thinking of ways to partner with all of them. And in some sort of capacity with kids. So, you know, brainstorming on that. And as someone who hates Halloween and doesn't celebrate, I had a blast at Halloween. Like, that was really well done, great community effort, love seeing everybody on the bound, chatting with our neighbors, I just thought that was absolutely outstanding, so.
Commissioner Herrera?
Was that the Halloween costume that we had here? It was a good event, it was nice to see where, you know, it started at and then what it's run into. The costume ideas have just gotten more elaborate, you know, year over year. And the community has just really grabbed onto this event. And you can tell that a lot of thought and effort is going into everybody's costumes that they're setting up. Those are really good turnout, and I say the community looked like they really had a great time. Also, actually made a trip out to Kansas this year to help out with the fall festival that they have over there. And so it was nice to go into a different community and kind of see how they operate. And just, I just had a really good time, and you know, kind of working with other people. And kind of getting out of what, you know, your norm is and getting involved in other people's. You know, we were all the same country, but everybody's got their own different customs, and it was a really great experience. So I'm really glad that I was able to do that.
Commissioner Jimenez?
As you said, I mean, I spoke to Scott from Boys and Girls Club. We've got a few events, sport events and art Esperanza. So we have a few events coming up. And we're probably gonna need help for. Our department. So hopefully we can get together and make those events coming up for kids, for Boys and Girls Clubs.
So just put those in a staff report, if they're in the initial phases, we have no problem putting a couple lines down and say that you're gonna introduce project about. Same with, for an event that's this, then you can have an open discussion on it.
Yeah, this event, actually, this event dates. They got involved between four Boys and Girls Clubs. A guy called Chara Boys and Girls Club, Bonz Prince Boys and Girls Club, Iya Kalale Boys and Girls Club. Encatelo City Boys and Girls Club involved in a tournament. That's all I have.
And I went to the, I participated in National Walks School Day, and afterwards I got a tour of the U Camp. Well, they're doing a lot of building at that, at two years workman middle school. And I got a tour of the new, a part of the school by Principal Omar. But to council members, I thought, the school is actually bigger than I thought. Doesn't look very big from the front, but it goes way back. Just had no idea that it was that big, but that's pretty cool, that, that cool event to go to. Halloween twenty five was a success, twenty five, two hundred and twenty five people and dogs attended. We had three more dogs than last year, which is kind of, so saved roughly the same attendance, and thank you to the commissioners that helped. And special thanks to Grace Reality who provided all the treats and refreshments for the third year in a row. Falling in spectacular, also got to judge the third hour with the police chief and the fire chief. That was awesome. Worked on the pride parade float, and if anyone wants to still do the parade with us, Mayor Ashley's going, I don't know, Karen's going, so if anyone's welcome. And it'll be on Sunday, the ninth. For meeting. The parade starts at, I'll be there by eight thirty. I volunteered at a senior bank, food bank yesterday, and I also volunteered at the Boys and Girls Club this last month. And I'll be heading over to the first Taste and Sounds for the fall. It's a big drag show tonight in honor of Pride Week, so hopefully the other commissioners will join me up there. And that is it. Do we have any future agenda items to discuss?
Well, it sounded like we had a couple, so we had two health fairs that we're gonna put on the agenda. And probably a little more on the paint, a little more specifics. So. Anything else you guys or the commission, the institution would like to submit to us? Just put it down. And if you want to formulate your idea a little better. You get to the, you relay us on this, and we'll push it back and ask for more information.
Two weeks, two weeks. And did someone ask if DRD ever got back to Deanna about the community boards at Esperanza Park, too? And if we did add that to the agenda? Thank you for asking. You just asked them to attend the meeting, you want to talk to them? Yeah, that's what I'm hoping. All right.
Everybody good? This meeting is adjourned.
How would you know I was very glad to?